Special meeting of Commissioners Court. And if you would join me in the invocation and the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flag. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you again for this day, for the blessings of this life. We ask that you give us energy and desire to serve. Father, be with us in the decisions that we make. Father, be with every member on this court. Father, be with every elected official and department head in this county as they make their decisions to guide employees, to service the citizens of this county. We're grateful for the opportunity, Father. We pray that we please them, but most, Father, most importantly, Father, we pray that we please you. Be with all of our first responders, our military. Keep them safe as they continue to do their work. Thank you for loving us so much, dear God, and in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Would you be seated, James?
We will now go to agenda item number two, public comments. Are there any? We'd ask you not all to rush up to the podium at one time. Public comment from me, remember that Saturday is an election day. There's a District thirteen election, there's a school, couple of school board elections, there's some city council, there's a liquor license election, and that will all hopefully conclude on Saturday. And so far in Grimes County, we've had one thousand three hundred and one people early vote. And I don't know what the mail vote is, that will be determined on election day. But our early voter workers have been at it all of last week, and they finished out yesterday evening. It was the last day for early voting, so we've had a pretty good turnout thus far. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will move to consent agenda items number three, four, and five. Consider and take action to approve payroll, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims and bills, and consider and take action to approve, oh, I'm sorry, not number five. Just three and four, excuse me. If there's no discussion, I move to approve the consent agenda items three and four.
Second motion.
There's a motion before the court from Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, to approve consent agenda items three and four. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number five, consider and take action to approve the appointment of Loy C. Coffey, financial advisor, with Edward Jones as the fourth member of Grimes County Investment Committee. Madam Treasurer?
Well, we have a vacancy due to Mr. Charlie Harrison, death. And I've been searching for a while, and then I had a meeting with Mr. Coffey last week Monday, and he talked to his advisors, and he's willing to serve as our fourth member for Galsborough.
Mr. Coffey, are you gonna get us twenty-plus percent on our investment?
You just don't put it in writing.
And he did say that we're doing the best job with what we've got.
Mr. Coffey, you're agreeable?
I am.
He brings along with him.
That being said, I appreciate you coming forward to do that, Mr. Coffey, and therefore I move that we approve the appointment of Loy C. Coffey as our financial advisor, our fourth financial advisor on this meeting.
Second. Do you have a second? There's a motion before the court on agenda item number five, a first by Commissioner David Dobianski, a second by Commissioner Philip Cox. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, consider and take action to approve the second reinstatement of the interlocal agreement for the construction, acquisition, implementation, operation, and maintenance of the Bravissis Valley Wide Area Communication System, better known as BBWAX, and authorize the county judge's signatory attachment number six. And if you look at that, you'll see it's a rather lengthy document, but our county attorney has been through it somewhere between three and thirty-five times.
You betcha. I flipped through it right before I fell asleep multiple times.
Mr. Green?
This is our interlocal agreement with the BBWAX radio system. This is the system that previous judge in the court had identified as a need for the county and had moved and initiated and joined on through a previous agreement. I think that our first agreement that we did was just to get on. Now, the operating board, it's actually every few years, they have to redo their interlocal agreement, because this runs through a five-year term. This is the first year to be on this particular version. We did an amendment to it last time. Now, this is the actual official documents. It's been through the operating board, myself and Dave Willey are both appointed on the operating board. The operating boards went through this agreement and made all the little tweaks and corrections to it. Then it goes to the governing board, which the judge is a member of, and all the other city mayors and county judges. And the neighborhood now has come before Commissioners Court to get approved before it's had any, the county judge has the signature before it actually gets pushed through. Only change on this one from the previous one, the original document, is that they are changing away kind of just some wording, not necessarily how the costs are allocated, but the wording they took out, you know, like per radio and put like percentage share of radio. But at the end of the day, when you still look at the actual budget numbers, they still break down to the cost per radio each user has on the system. Do y'all have any questions?
Well, it was discussed in our board meeting that the cost per radio, because of the expansion of that system, the cost per radio is going down, so we're getting, gonna have more usage for.
Yeah, it's actually going down to three dollars and thirty-seven cents per radio.
Right.
And that's some of the additional, obviously, we're, the first year we came on it, we were, there was a mandate that we at least pay for a hundred and four radios, kind of break-even point that they figured out. Now, there's more radios coming on, you know, in our departments, they're getting issued radios and stuff. Obviously, the radio count is going up, so they've already done the projection of the radio count, so two thousand nineteen, we're gonna be charged at a rate of, for two hundred, two hundred and nine radios, that twenty dollars and thirty-one cents per radio.
Is that annually or monthly?
Well, the twenty dollars is monthly, so it's two forty-three point seven seven. We've had great success with the radios, what we're using now. Places where our radios in the cars didn't work, we're talking on the handcuffs, so. And y'all see next week, the agreement for the tower going up, and once we get the antennas up on the tower, we'll bring you that stuff.
And you said now the fire departments are included in the two hundred and nine radios?
Yeah, because they've been allocated, I know, I think they, each fire chief already has a radio, and then they just been allocated forty-nine additional radios.
I don't know that they were able to allocate one per vehicle unit for the fire departments, but the distribution that they've allocated does give. Sir?
It was pretty close.
Yes, it was, it was. So, most of the units are going to be covered under this agreement, which is, I think, a very good plus for the county.
And then I know, as we looked in our budget forecast for next year, we're looking on, planning on, because some of the radios we got, they are, you know, used radios, some other departments that we're getting, you know. We're gonna start a new, a rotation program where we trade some out every year, so we're not stuck with, you know, fifty at one time. And as those, older radios come free, we can bring them down and give it to the fire departments also, to make sure everybody's got all the radios.
Are the fire departments covering the cost?
That's, that's something, y'all make decision on that.
Do you know if the fire department is covering theirs monthly?
I don't.
I mean, that was brought up before.
I think, I think right now the county's paying all the, all the costs.
Thus far, the county has been paying all of the costs, my understanding. Isn't that right, Jesse?
Yes, we've paid two quarters, and then we paid the actual, there is a, what is it called, the operational?
Operational.
It's a budgeted and ten, and non-departmental, ten, four, twenty-four, five oh seven. The capital, we paid the capital contribution, and then we've paid the first and second quarter thus far. Or is that the BBWAX, the maintenance?
Uh huh. Does indeed. And it was budgeted?
It is, yes.
I'm just asking, because I know when we initially talked about it, we was talking about the cost to our fire department, they were, you know, but I'm glad to hear.
From, from my understanding of that, I guess the, what I know is the county is paying the monthly costs. Now, any maintenance that you break on the radio, or any maintenance on the radio units itself, is on each individual department, but that, the operating costs or the airtime per use of the radio to have on the system is being paid by the county.
Okay. And that's four twenty-four, five oh seven?
Yes. So what we budgeted was twenty-nine thousand five fifty-five dollars.
And this is a restatement?
Yeah, the first, the first statement, they actually issued before we actually became a member, and we did an amendment last year, and now this is the second reinstatement.
Okay. Y'all are saying reinstatement, it say restatement, so I'm just making sure we're on the same page.
It's a restatement, not a reinstatement.
They're not reinstating you, but they're.
They're still there.
They're making a statement again, okay. All right, thank you. With that being said, if there are no further questions, then I'd like to make the motion to approve the second restatement of the interlocal agreement for the construction, acquisition, implementation, operation, and maintenance of the Bravissis Valley Wide Area Communication Systems, and authorize the county judge's signatory.
Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number six. Commissioner Walker has made a first. Commissioner Mallett has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chief Green, thank you for your work and this effort.
Thank you.
I know it's been fun.
We're super excited.
Mr. Foltz, thank you for nodding through it.
Not being obstructionist, is that what you mean?
I tell you, I, I did my level best as a newbie to read it, and it was pretty boring, but necessary.
Clearly, some lawyers came up with that. I would, I know Chief Green made a comment about the tower lease next Wednesday, he won't be here, so we've asked that it be on the agenda. If anybody prefers we not have that discussion until he's here, you may want to punt it, but that's not on the agenda for today, he just raised that issue somewhat related.
I think it behooves us to go ahead and have a discussion, and then if there was an issue, we could certainly table that. Chief, would that be okay with you?
Yes.
Commissioners? Okay, thank you. We will now go to agenda item number seven, discussion determining the process for evaluating department heads with regards to their annual performance reviews. I ask this to be placed on the agenda, because again, I was confused in the process, or do we have a process? Is there an agreement to the process as to who's going to do what? We previously agreed that we do have a, or we agreed on the Grimes County departmental chart, and that is where we have Grimes County voters at the top, we have Commissioners Court reporting to them, and then a distribution of department heads that are under the court. But I guess I'd like some explanation for the senior court members of, what do you understand the evaluation process to be for those that don't, for those department heads that don't report directly to an individual?
Well, last year, we had a evaluation, we did in April of last year, for the different departments that sit upon the Commissioners Court. We had the Veterans Department come in, we had Ms. Delf come in, Ms. Lucy Pope, Catherine Lee, and Wayne, Mr. Wayne Alvin, those reported. We did an evaluation as a court on, on the, those employees. Now, my understanding of the charge or organizational charge we just did was basically liaisons. To me, that just means that somebody we, they can go to if there's an issue, or kind of oversee that department, but as a whole, the evaluation is done as a Commissioners Court.
Okay.
I, it was brought to my attention that the evaluations were never signed, is that correct, Ms. Lucy?
They were signed by, by the judge.
They were signed?
Uh huh, by, by judge.
Yeah, at the end of, at the end of that, I think he stated that he would sign all of the, if that was okay with us.
Okay, all right.
But the evaluations were presented to the individuals in a group setting by the court?
Yes.
Are there any department heads in here? How was that process for you?
I didn't get an evaluation. If it did, I was put in a box. I know.
We just fired you away, Ms. Green.
Yeah, so I'm still here for you.
I made sure that Ms. Williams was gonna come and kind of explain her situation to the court, because hers is kind of a unique situation, so.
Well, obviously, you would have to have prosecutors and law enforcement that could it, that he had like the sheriff, the county attorney, and district attorney, that would know out in the community what I'm doing, what I'm presenting back and forth. Y'all know part of it, but my job is actually in Code of Criminal Procedure fifty-six oh one, is that when law enforcement, I, I started at the very early beginning, Angar to Cory and Gerald and Bakers, they supposed to get information and then present it to me, gather up, and I'm supposed to make sure that everything is processed from the very beginning to the end of the criminal case with a victim involved in it. And even with dealing with parole. So, it's, it's a little unique, but it's still, it's, it sounds great, the title, but it's a gopher. But just to make sure that the victims are, their rights are carried out in court, and also protecting the judges, the county attorneys from, you gonna get a lawsuit, but making sure I've gotten the i's and crossing the t's. Some district attorneys have been already removed from office because the victims are saying they hadn't had their rights, and so documentation is really prevalent in all the cases. So, it's just, just making sure that their rights are protected, because they have been more visible with government, from Washington DC all the way down to here, to make sure that they have their rights.
So, what I hear you saying is the people that she works with are really the people that can basically almost, because we were under the impression at first that you were under the district attorney.
I know, lucky years ago, I was, it was under Larry Snook's reign, that Commissioners Court appointed me as the crime victim coordinator for the county.
So who you think would evaluate you? Would it be Commissioners Court as a whole?
Well, I'm sure the, the prosecutors would have to, probably.
So that would be the DA's office?
Yes.
All right. Anybody, any other office?
Of course, which I know he's like, whatever.
Mr. Foltz, would you be a party of that?
You have to know that I know better than to step on Brenda's toes, right? So, the Code of Criminal Procedure requires that each prosecutor's office have a crime victim coordinator. She is technically an employee of mine and an employee of the DA's office. I don't think anybody has any desire, to this point, because she has been given her own department, it has been that she has been treated as a department head, and as I understand, through the evaluation process, Judge Lamond wanted her to be evaluated by the court. I'd also make the point while I'm talking about it, that Code of Criminal Procedure requires that each law enforcement entity, being the sheriff's office and the police department, designate a crime victim liaison, and that is for the sheriff's office, is Cory and my office. All that to say, I would be happy to participate with the DA's office. Our caseload for juveniles is far less than the district attorney's office, so the number of victims that Brenda serves, or even Cory serves, for purposes of juvenile cases is far less than what it'll be for adults. So, certainly, we want to have Ms. Bender's buy-in on this and comment on this. I would be happy to participate from a dice and scall at Brenda and make her tell us what she's been doing, if that's what the court wants us to do, but in all, in all honesty, what she does for juveniles is far less in the way of numbers than it's gonna be for adults.
I'll also add that in our evaluation, after hearing and talking with the employees, we also set forth maybe goals or what we'd like to see to happen, so I don't know if we could do that as a court, not knowing exactly what she does, so, you know, if there's something that y'all see coming down the pipe, y'all are more familiar with it than we would be, the district attorney, your office, y'all are more familiar with what goes on there than we are.
Providing we could coordinate it, would it not be a good idea when the court evaluates Ms. Williams, that we have the district attorney, and that we have the county attorney present to help be kind of the subject matter experts along with yourself?
I'm, I'm up for whatever you want to do, Judge, and that's fine.
The, the main thing I want is that at the end of the day, that the employee knows how we feel they're doing at the job that we're paying them to do, along with the employee knows what we expect them to do as the clock continues to tick in the future, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, so to speak.
And also, on a different note, the Poper Sparrow Coordinator, I'm, I'm there for people that die in the county. Y'all might want to have that a little separate for me to give you a report. I, I don't publicize it, because once people know about it, they will be calling and wanting all their family members to be there, and I've had some issues with that, but however y'all want to treat that, let me know.
Well, those that are buried could not speak on your behalf.
Well, they got family, people that.
Okay, they're associated.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the point that she's making is that's not a crime victim coordinator job, that's a role that the court gave her, and so.
Other duties as a sign.
You all may want to evaluate that, or at least have an awareness of what it is that she does, how often we see those cases, what the expense is, et cetera.
Sure. Do you interface with the JP's?
What about adult or juvenile probation? So, Ms. Cox, you, you are familiar with her job also?
Yeah, and I think out of fundamental fairness, she didn't, reportedly didn't get an evaluation last year, and I think it would behoove the, the process for her to get one this year, so.
Sure. Every employee would have one.
I don't know, you know, she does a lot of work with a lot of different agencies, and I don't, you know, good work, obviously, but I think, I don't necessarily know that you want, would want to have them come in here personally, maybe write, you know, their, their ideas down for us to consider in that evaluation process, because it, there's a lot of people that she does, does work with.
And I'm on call twenty-four seven, until you don't know that. I don't tell you, so.
Well, Judge, it's my understanding that Judge Lamond was gonna do an evaluation, did that not happen last year?
I thought we did, I thought we did. Upon Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Pulp, did you ever get anything submitted?
Okay, well, that's a conversation.
He was trying.
Okay, that's a conversation Judge Lamond and I had about who would, who would do it. I think at that time, Mr. McLean didn't, wanted the court to handle it as, as well as I said, that's fine, as long as she's a department head, seems to me the court may want to handle it. Let me just say that, in my mind, what happens is you have a, an offense that occurs, and there is a victim, and you have someone that has to give the victim notice of what their rights are, and what's going on with the case, and where the defendant is, from the time of the offense to the time it ends up in the prosecutor's office. That's usually the liaison's role, because they're designated to give out information when it's in the hands of law enforcement, to the point that it gets to the prosecutor's office, they would, the prosecutor wouldn't be aware of, okay? So, it would be law enforcement and somebody in their office to make victims, or alleged victims, aware of what's going on. Once it hits a prosecutor's office, though, all the way up to prosecution, and even beyond that, that's Brenda's job. So, it's informing them of their rights, it's letting them know when somebody's released from jail, it's letting them know when they can get compensation that's allowed through the state, it's various, she has a role of informing victims as to what is going on with the case, when court settings are coming up, and what their rights are, and making sure that somebody's there for them if they have to testify, puts them in a room where they don't have to face the defendant in the hallway, various things like that. So, while it is something that I have familiarity with, and you may not, that's the general sum of what she does, and of course, there are lots of moving parts with that.
Sure.
But it's not beyond you as a, as a court, or members of the court, to comprehend what that role looks like. So, I'll have, I'd be happy to participate, but what I've just said to you is what I know about her role, and now you know it.
Ms. Williams, did you turn in a job description? We also receive job descriptions.
I'll, I'll turn that in before they just demand that they have one.
Okay. We got job descriptions from everyone.
And we use those to the job evaluation process?
Yeah.
So we know, know where to classify everybody. Okay. Well, I, I, well, two things, one, I don't, okay, but, two things, one, I don't want to evaluate every department head in the county, because I don't know, I don't have a close enough hand on what they're doing, and two, I want to make sure that every employee, department heads included, get the fairness of an evaluation, because if they're doing a great job, we need to let them know that, and if they're not doing a satisfactory job, we'd like them to know that before we throw them out on the street.
Okay, just to make sure I understood what you said, when you say you don't want to evaluate every department head.
I personally.
Oh, you personally, okay.
If, if we're all in this, I mean, and the reason is, I don't have the data, the full understanding, I mean, I could evaluate Ms. Williams on the basis of her telling me what she does, but I really don't know how to evaluate, is she doing a satisfactory job? Is she doing an excellent job? Is she doing an outstanding job?
Well, last year was our first time doing it, and it was done on the, with everybody in, in attendance.
And, and I'm not opposed to that, I just wanted to make sure that we're all in agreement to the process, and we'll participate in this as much as we possibly can, particularly in fairness to the employees that are being evaluated.
Ms. Duff, do you have her hand up?
I'm sorry, who?
Ms. Duff.
Ms. Duff?
I was brought in and evaluated, but I do not recall getting what the evaluation was for me, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the day, I don't.
And, and don't take this the wrong way, but your evaluation is kind of an oddball evaluation, because you're not, the court, you're the election committee, which would be the two party chairs, the county judge, the tax assessor-collector, and the county clerk. Those five make up your panel.
And that'd be great, I, you know, because they all can know how I function to a certain extent, you know, and so if they evaluate me, that'd be great.
I think that some of the issues we talk about are. I think that some of the issues we talk about are, are things that we want to implement. I think the court should still be involved in that, because we talked about the lockdown procedures on your equipment, and, and you coming up with procedure on reporting security that's needed at those storages, and we talked about the new locations of precinct five and those kind of things. So, to me, you know, some of that kind of involves the court, because of your storage situation also.
All that is a big facet of what it do, what, what it do, holy places. And when you've got parties that are opposing moving, then, then that's another thing I've had to deal with.
Well, I guess I'm, what I'm getting to, update, because many times we'll get calls about your department, if, you know, from citizens, you know that, at every election, you're going to run into those issues. You know, I don't know how often you have to report to your board.
Whenever they call, I'm ready, and it's a question of law.
So, what we, what we could do in Ms. Duff's situation, we could solicit from the two party chairs, from the county clerk, from the tax assessor, any issues, concerns, positive or negative, that they're aware of, submit that to us, and then we, as a court, fill in the blanks on the performance evaluation. Is that okay?
Judge, another option, just throwing it out there is-
You do it?
Because all of it, sure. I'd be happy to do it. I'll start with you, if I might. If, if each of these folks is technically a county employee, then certainly you could do it in closed session before the court, and you could bring in those other members of that commission, and have them comment the same thing you're proposing for me and the DA to do. All of us have the evaluation at the same time. And, and I leave that obviously up to you, but to the degree that you're going to have some effect over the budget of those offices, you may want to hear, and you also may want to hear, to the degree that you think that my questions are informed questions for Ms. Williams, because I know what she does, you as a member of the court may want to hear those, so that you're better informed about what she actually does. Same thing as far as Ms. Duff is concerned, you may want to have the commission here, which obviously you're on, but have the other folks present in the room as you all do the evaluation at the same time. I've said, and I'll shut up after I say this, but I've said to many, many members of the court, you shouldn't feel like you're stepping on toes if you're going around trying to find out what various jobs are in the county. And to the degree that it's impossible to set a meeting notice or agenda for each of, for the five of you to meet in each office and say, so-and-so, as elected official as a department head, show us what you do, tell us what you do, you're handing dollars to these folks when they make a request for dollars, and typically, it's for increased dollars, not the same dollars. There's nothing wrong with you finding out what they do by going to their office and saying, show me what it is that you do, so that when I, when it comes budget time, I know what dollars I need to allocate to your, to your budget. So, all to say, you could say, you know, send them to the, to the folks that are technically the board that appoints or removes, or let's say the prosecutor that appoints or not. If their department heads and you as a court have created them as a department, certainly you have a vested interest in knowing what dollars are appropriate for future use. But I don't think there's any, there shouldn't be any reluctance on your part, and I, maybe I sensed that and it wasn't there. There shouldn't be any reluctance on your part to ask people, what do you do? Tell me what you do, show me what that looks like from eight to five every day. Why do you need more people? Why, why do you need more pins? Why do you need more paperclips? Show me what it looks like, and if you don't want to do it as an individual of the member of the court walking around to each of the offices, the only real time that you get that information is in the evaluation.
And do I understand you to say, to say that we can also make that request or demand, however you want to phrase it, of elected officials? And then they can say, I'm not telling your squad, and then we have the authority to say, you're not going to get much of a budget this year either.
The rub is that if you fail to give elected officials sufficient money to discharge their duties, that could be problematic. One would assume that if they had sufficient funds last year to perform their duties, failing to give them additional, additional money is probably not going to cause them issues. But you don't know that, I mean, we faced that one time, thirteen years that I've been here. But unfortunately, as we've talked and all of you know, that's the leverage you have to get elected officials to be team players. They're not willing to be team players and say, look, I'm an open book, I want to be on the same team, let's pull in the same direction. If we don't have the money for me to have additional pins, I don't need the pins. So, it, it, you should have elected officials that want to come and show you what's going on, and have you informed about what their duties are, and what they're providing for the county, and what ideas they have about making things better. And if you don't, I would think you'd want to be suspicious about what the heck's going on in their office.
And a portion of that is already established when we have the budget hearings, correct?
Correct, yeah, correct. That, yeah, that those, you're, you're not evaluating them, obviously, to give them a six or seven or eight or nine for purposes of changing their money, probably. And you certainly could do that in budget time. If, if I'm, if I'm there, if I'm changing positions, and I don't know what a particular, I don't know what the county attorney's office does, I'm going to ask the county attorney, tell me what you do. Tell me what, what, why should we put money in your budget? I mean, what is it, why are you asking for money? Now, to be fair, I'm asking for a budget reduction this year, as I have for the past several years, so hopefully you won't grill me too much on a reduction request. But the point is, you ought to be asking those questions, and it shouldn't be offensive to the person sitting on the other side of the table.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You bet.
So, to move it along a little bit, now, let me make sure that this departmental, y'all named it something else, Ms. Lucy. What y'all named that? What's that word?
Departmental. Grimes County Departmental Chart.
Okay. All right. That was just liaisons and building manhoods. So, just to be sure I'm understanding also, because we have it county-wide.
Correct.
Okay. Organization of chart.
Okay, so, we are in agreement, or we understand one another, that then we will bring department heads in, we'll evaluate them collectively. If we feel we need subject matter experts that they deal with more directly, as the example we've talked about, we'll invite them to participate in that review, and then ultimately, we will put together the evaluation. Employee can sign it, or appeal it, or whatever. But at least we'll have that documentation for their record, for human resources.
Now, will you sign, be the one signing the evaluation, so that the one, you know, we can be clear on that?
I, I'm okay to do that. I'm okay to sign, and my signature is simply saying, we've evaluated this employee.
Okay.
Okay?
And will we put a copy of it too?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Absolutely. And then the, I, I guess, the other thing, Ms. Pope, we had put a somewhat of an arbitrary deadline out there for all of the evaluations to be submitted. I guess we're going to need a little latitude.
You know, send an email out saying May first, but there's no way, it may, this is May second. So, it's up to the commissioners' court to decide when y'all want to set up these evaluations, by the end of May, or, you know, I don't know when you're going into budget hearings, so.
End of May?
It's going to be up to the court to, to decide.
All right, well, we will-
I've got another question about the evaluations. Just dealing with some things that I know that may be occurring. What happens when the employee is not in agreement with the evaluation? I know there's a little comment, but how do we go back and review that type of situation? Or is that just for record only?
No, Commissioner Court, I mean, anyone on the Commissioners' Court can come in and look at those evaluations, and look at those comments. I'm going to, that form that I gave y'all last year, that, that gave all the information that the department head did turn in a, a performance evaluation on a certain employee. What I'm doing this year is I'm putting the score, what they scored them. And if there's any comments, and I'll put, you know, you'll have to come to the office to see the comment.
I know we discussed that, it, it's also a time for, although the department head or elected official is evaluating the employee, but it's also a reflection back to the elected official or departmental head, what the employee sees.
Sure.
You know, so, I just-
If they scored them low, then if you want me, on that scoring sheet that I give, I'm going to give each of you a binder, when all the performance evaluations get in. I've given a few departments, like the sheriff's department and the DA, that, until Monday to get theirs in. And when, when they all come in, then you will get a binder with all these score sheets on there. And it's up to you, as a Commissioners' Court. I can put down the, if someone was scored low, why they were scored low. Or you can come to my office and look at it.
Okay, so, the other question, out of that call that I received about an evaluation, is, I, my question to you was, is there anything, say, if, if, if raises were given to a certain department, is there a score that prohibits them from getting?
That's up to the judge.
You know, that was a question brought to me, so-
If you want an answer, I'll give you one.
Okay.
When these evaluations, can we talk about this?
If it's related to the agenda.
It's related to the evaluations?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds related to the agenda.
So, my, my thought process is, if somebody has scored a seven or eight, which would be an outstanding- satisfy, no.
Exceptional.
Exceptional.
Okay, and then outstanding. If they're scored a seven or eight, which is exceptional, nine or ten, which is outstanding, in my mind, they'd be considered for a merit increase. If they're rated a five or six and get a satisfactory, I'm of the opinion, Joe Fouse of the opinion, they're not entitled to a merit increase, because their, their current rate of pay, and what we pay them, is a satisfactory rate of pay for a satisfactory job. Anybody that's below that, one and two, or three and four, we need to be, that department head or that elected official, needs to be working with that employee to either get them up or get them out. Because if they're going to manage mediocre to employees, they're going to have mediocre departments. And we, I don't think as a court, want to support that. So, to answer the question, my opinion is, a seven would be the minimum score someone would receive, that they would then be eligible for some type of a merit increase, provided the court even says we're going to have money for merit increases.
Well, with that being said, that was not, that was not, nothing we, what do I want to say? Explored or put in writing, because there's nothing in writing that says if I got a six point five, that I wouldn't be considered.
Would we even have to put that in there, though? Because the, the pay raises are up to the individual elected official, unless we, the Commissioners' Courts, are evaluating that person. So, it's up to the elected official to make that decision, whether or not they're going to give their employees a raise. They get the money and they put it, give it out however they want to.
But we still have departments under us also, so-
That's what I'm saying, if they're under us, yeah, they could come to us for that. But if it's, if it's an elected official, we shouldn't have anything to do with it. It's their responsibility to evaluate and give raises to their employees if they feel like they're, just like the judge said, you know, it's their, it's, it's their duty to evaluate and give their employees raises, not ours.
Well, I'm just playing devil's advocate, because this is what I'm hearing, okay?
Glad you are.
Uh, because, you know, if they're bringing it to me, and I'd like to have an answer for them. And then, I, you know, we did discuss it, and, you know, I didn't, you, I didn't find anything that said they wouldn't be considered. I know that the request for the raise is going to come from the department head or whatever, but it doesn't say that if I get a marginal score or something like that, I'm not going to receive, you know, they may not understand that.
Well, the employee might not, but I guess the flip side of that is if we, if we put it in writing that employees are not going to be considered for a merit increase unless their score is a seven or higher, how many, how many evaluation performance reviews are going to be changed by a department head or an elected official to bump it up? So, that does meet that criteria.
Can I say something? Just like, for instance, I have one person in my office that hasn't been there four months. I have to give her an evaluation. I don't, she hasn't been there long enough to be an exceptional, in my opinion, an exceptional employee, because she's still learning. So, if you're going to say that you're going to cut it off and say, well, she can't get a raise unless she's seven or above, that cuts out all the people who are improving to get up to that point. That's why it should be our decision, we ask for the money, and then we should be able to distribute it to amongst our employees, our, what we feel, because it's not fair, she hasn't been there a whole year. She doesn't have, it takes time to learn all the ins and outs and details of the job that these girls do in my office and hers.
Well, that's my point, I'm just opening it up for discussion, because it was brought to me, and I just wanted to, to put it out here, and, and let's deal with it. The other thing was, all, all of our county employees don't sit up under a department head within the county.
Right.
So, just, just throwing that out there too, and safe end, it's just, it's a, it's a touching situation-
I get it.
When you get a score and you can't say, well, I'm not in agreement, do they not sign it, or what?
Well, they-
I have my girls, before I turn it in, I do the evaluation with them. There's a place on there for them to make a comment, and we discuss whatever, they write down what they think the comment is. Under, right underneath that is a blank, that says if we need to further have another follow-up on this, where you put a date on there, that it's up to the elected official to go back at that point in time when that date is, and reevaluate, give it to that person again and say, okay, this is improved, it has improved, or whatever.
Well, I'm just going to throw that out there to you too. You've got department heads or elected officials who are not evaluating their, their employees, who are not setting goals for them, and then when it's evaluation time, you're saying, well, you didn't meet my need. Well, you haven't told me what you wanted, you know, so it's kind of unfair to me that you didn't give me goals, you didn't say anything that you want to see me improve, or it's so vague.
Right. But that's what evaluations are for, is communication between the department heads or elected officials and the people that's working with you.
Well, we, we need to definitely let them know, and in between here and there, maybe every six months, maybe, look at the, the evaluation, because what's happening is, you're going an entire year, you have them reevaluate to see if I'm doing, if, if I'm performing bad, and, and I don't know I'm still performing bad, and, and then when it comes, boom, you know, you give me a five, you know, because you didn't even look back at it.
I totally agree. I mean, I don't like the idea of an annual performance review. I think managers ought to, department heads, elected officials, they ought to be talking to their employees on a regular, ongoing basis.
Well, we, we find that some departments, the employees are just on their own, you know, just kind of-
I find that-
I'm just saying.
I mean, you know, that's the department head.
It's a department head, it's not, it's not a court.
I, I'm just saying, I'm just playing devil's advocate, like I said, because I'm hearing it.
In your situation with your four-month, your four-month employee, under what I said, they wouldn't get an increase because you rated them a satisfactory, a five or a six? Okay? And what would be your intention, what would be your thought and plan for that individual?
Number one, we have to do this so many months in advance.
Agreed.
By, you know, five months before they can even get a raise. But in five months, with the things that we've discussed that she needs to work on, if she's improved in five months, then she should get that raise.
Okay.
You know, she might be up to the exceptional then.
Judge, could I say something, maybe this to wrap it up? I just want to be sure and remind the court, and, and I think you've proven the reason not to have a hard and fast rule that says sevens get raises and sixes don't.
Yeah.
You develop the preliminary budget with the assistance of the auditor, and you make the determination as to what you prefer, as far as what departments may get money, allocate for bonuses, but the court gets to come behind you and say, we don't agree with you, Judge, in the final budget, we think Ms. Waters' office ought to have some money to pay that raise for so-and-so. So, leaving it as it is gives, I don't want anybody here to think that you all don't have a bite at the apple to get this done. You've got two, but the rest of the court has one, to say, if we deem somebody had a six, needs a raise, where previously we thought it had to be a seven, you leave yourself to- You leave yourself the flexibility by not having a hard and fast rule. So you will have the opportunity to hear the input, let's say, I started to say complaints, the input of. Department heads or elected officials about, this is why this circumstance is different from anywhere else, and you will still, as, as, you as the judge. Preparing the preliminary, and the court as a whole, will have the ability to comment on that particular circumstance when it comes.
And I know that we have to go.
Well, I understand, but I mean, just, just to sum it up also from my end, I think it's good for us to have a target to shoot for, and have an understanding. But I also know the limb, the limb that doesn't bend breaks, and we write the rules, and we have, as a court, the authority to change those rules. Not in the middle of the game, but if there's an extenuating circumstance, when I have a, an employee that's showing. Good promise of being a strong employee, then the consideration could indeed be that, we're going to, you're, you as a department head will reserve a little bit of your. Merit money to give to that individual, and I think that's the option of that elected official. Good discussion, thank you, so we're going to have to set a schedule as quickly as we can to get these other evaluations taken care of. Because we don't want to leave anybody without an evaluation being done.
And make sure they get them too.
And my, oh, we'll make sure that they get them, absolutely, because if I'm going to sign them, I'm going to make sure that they sign them, whether they agree or not. Okay, uh.
I move you to adjourn.
Gosh, okay, so there's a motion before the court to adjourn from Commissioner Dobianski and Commissioner. There's a fight between Commissioner Walker and Mallett, so we'll, I heard Commissioner Mallett first, he's the second. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.